Need to send the team's link.
How do we go? I could tell one of us was just being right there. Just mocked him. A few minutes later, I seen the sinkhole.
She's still be able to get in.
Do you want Liz to send your link?
Yeah, send her.
I'm glad she wanted to.
The week before you said.
You're pretty ahead. Same with no response from both of them. So, will we have Liz?
Hello, I can hear you guys now.
I just need Counselor Rush. I can only talk through an email, so she can see a little further. Yeah. And just wait just a couple of seconds, she should be able to.
Alright, I'd like to call the regular council meeting for April 22nd order at 7:03. First order of business is the call for pecuniary interest regarding the agenda. I don't believe anybody has anything and we have some in camera Donna. Updates are.
Our standards.
Standards, okay, so there's nothing in there. So, next item will be the agenda additions, there is one addition. 11.2 Bill 50 update. Donna's gonna talk to that.
I will.
Is anybody ahead of anything else?
No, but just as like a note, maybe we want to add things to the agenda before we call for pecuniary interests.
Sorry about that, you're lucky there, but.
It's not really relevant, I don't think, but you know, it could have been.
I'm very evil.
A little out of order.
Okay, anything else that's not gonna get a motion to accept the agenda with the one addition?
Sure.
Donna, in favor? That is carried, thank you. Alright, 4.1, adoption of the previous minutes for the regular meeting of March 25th and the Cowell meeting for April 8th. Are there any error issues, anybody has anything? Heard none, can I get a motion to adopt those minutes?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, in favor? That is carried. Okay, so we're gonna go right into the 5.1, the Bylaw 2025-03, Amendment to the Land Use Bylaw Public hearing. Sally, you wanna?
Your worship with your kind permission, I will turn this over to Ms. Armitage as our final counsel.
Absolutely, so go ahead Liz.
Good evening, a quick procedural question, do we need to have a motion to open the public hearing?
We do, Liz. Motion to open the public hearing?
Yeah.
Thank you, in favor? Sally, I see you there, thank you. Okay, that is carried. Alright, there we go, we're open.
Excellent, um, this one is pretty straightforward, so.
Go ahead Liz, sorry.
Yep.
Excellent, um, this one's pretty straightforward, of course I've jinxed us by saying that, um, but it's, we're gonna go with it. Um, we are here tonight to present public hearing and second and third reading of Bylaw 2025-03 to redesignate Lot 4 Block 5 Plan 3473 EO, also known as 4834 Hinkin Street, from Central Commercial District to Public Service District to accommodate a Veterans Park. The site is bordered by adjacent commercial to the north and south, Hinkin Street to the east and Our Lady of Victory Catholic Church to the west. The location is within the commercial core of the town of Thorsby. It's currently vacant and the site has been located within the community, make, located centrally within the community, making it an ideal location for a park. The registered landowner has chosen to donate the subject parcel to the Royal Canadian Legion for the purpose of creating a park and in order to appropriately fit the land use into the future development of the park, the parcel should be redesignated. The Community Development Section Part 10 of the Municipal Development Plan, which I'll refer to as the MDP, speaks to strategic direction that council would like to see implemented in regards to community amenities. It notes that the town aspires to maintain and improve the range of quality of community institutional facilities and services as the provision of community services enhances the quality of life and for residents and visitors. This park is a great opportunity for that. As well, Policy 21.5 notes that the town encourages cooperation between the town, Ladue County, Black Gold Regional Division 18 and the 3920 Alliance and other community groups on the sharing of facilities and resources. The Royal Canadian Legion would fit well within this policy clause as well. The Public Service District within the Land Use Bylaw is intended to accommodate a development of uses which serve the public, which are of benefit to the community. The purpose, the proposed use of Veterans Park fits into the noted purpose of the district and will be a centralized space within the community. We see no off-site nuisance effects to adjacent properties and will probably be a better use for a vacant site than the nothing that is there now. Um, so in summary, the application aligns with the policies and regulations of both the Municipal Development Plan and the Land Use Bylaw. It is worth noting that ads were placed in the March 28th and April 4th additions of the Connect 39 and we also emailed all affected agencies on March 31st and we also sent Canada Post mails to all adjacent landowners on March 31st. We received two written comments, both of which were of no concern by the time of publication of this report. Jessie has been able to confirm with me today that we have received no additional comments since then. So, we have no additional comments to read into the record. Ultimately, administration believes that this fits well with the uses outlined in the district and the proposed use and therefore we recommend passing second and third. Unless, of course, we have some comments tonight, we may have additional comments that we would make before final recommendation.
Okay, well, thanks for that, so I guess I'm late, I've got to be here now, yeah, go ahead Cory.
Well, I guess it's, my only real question would be what are the two comments? I, it's easy to say they're not of concern, but I haven't heard them, so I don't have any idea what they are. I'm assuming they aren't overly critical or germane, otherwise you would have brought them forward, but I have no idea what they are, so how am I supposed to know that?
On page 16 of the agenda report, it says Fortis Alberta has no concerns, please contact 310-wire.
I think you implied that there's two public comments that you had received in the meantime.
Nope, nope, just two comments, period, just Fortis and Telus, yep, yep.
Alright, thank you, Cory, so, um, do you want me to go through this whole statement here? I guess from the start here to Donna, Jessie just handed me like.
That was your big long spiel, that's what I was saying, for the whole big long, like, take a deep breath first.
Yeah, just the confirmation, the report, the written submissions and all that, I guess I should go away from it. Okay, so, uh, so the, we got the confirmation of the notice, is that correct, Liz?
Yes, it was advertised in the local newspaper and also made available to agencies and to directly adjacent landowners.
Okay, I see that here, thank you, and the report from the Development Services?
That would be everything I just went through.
Correct, so then the written submissions, um, and that's the other thing that you've talked about there.
Yep.
So, as of April 2016, we had those two submissions, that's it. So, the next question I would have, is there any persons here wishing to be heard?
Publicly, yes.
Pardon me?
Publicly, yes.
Yeah, no, but I'm just asking if anybody wishes to be heard here. Okay, I'm gonna ask for the first time, so I'm gonna ask for the second time, are there any persons here wishing to be heard at this time?
He said he, during the first time.
What do you wanna do, okay, you wanna say anything?
Yes, a couple of questions I'd like to ask.
Okay.
So, it's regarding the Veterans Park. Is that gonna be the actual name of the park? Or is it gonna be named something else?
Your worship, through to Kevin, that will be a decision that the Legion will make. Right now, we're calling it Veterans Park. The landowner requested in his donation letter that it be called Veterans Park as well. So, that will be a vote through the Legion.
Through the Legion, okay, and then, obviously, the land was donated. I was wondering if council has gotten a hold of, just some kind of a letter of reference for a thank you to the Legion and to this gentleman that's donated.
Your worship, through to Kevin, that will, that will happen when things clear land titles.
Right.
And that will be up to the Legion to initiate that, that thank you letter because the town, our purpose in this is just to redesignate the land to public service. So, that will be the landowner's job to discuss that with the Legion.
As well as I noticed, there's a bit of a back lane going across the back of the park.
It's a back alley or something?
Yeah, yeah, that could be Legion's decision whether they back that or not. I'm thinking more of the damage for kids, people walking through the back lanes and the back alleys and stuff. I get it, as a prevent.
Yeah, I think, I think we will eventually, we will send it that, that's what, you know, get that monument, I mean, get the Senate tap and get everything in place and then we put the fence around it.
Okay, so there's gonna be some kind of.
I'm hoping to have a, probably a four foot fence around it.
And then, what about the walkway? Is there gonna be, what kind of walkway, have you guys planned with paths? I'm thinking more of people walking up to the Senate tap and saying their piece and stuff like that, so whether there be a sidewalk in there?
There's a sidewalk and a sign up to the Senate tap and probably on the, on the side. We don't really know where we're gonna put all of the fallen heroes pictures. I, I'm in the process of making a model and what I think we should have. And then we want a picture of it and then Donna and anybody else that have a different idea, we'll just move all these pictures around and then find something that's satisfactory for everybody here.
And then does all that stuff have to be sent to our councilman?
To.
To our councilman.
Uh, no, then on the inside of the, inside of the park, no, it's, we're gonna look at a grant from the Canadian Legion. We have to do all this work ahead of time so they can see what we want to do with it and they have no, no issues with it and the planner has no issues with moving the Senate tap because that'll be the tallest, the tallest sphere there. And then once, once we have the, the drawings of it, then it goes with the grant to our council. We have to be separate to get that grant too.
And then, I'm curious about the maintenance, is the town gonna take over the maintenance?
I think the town will probably go to the maintenance.
Yeah, we haven't, your worship, through to Kevin, we haven't discussed that yet. They could have been waiting to discuss that with the Legion and see what they want to do. There's not gonna be a whole lot of maintenance to do there in a long time.
The grass?
There is the grass, that's it.
Probably weed or something.
Yeah.
Those girls can do that.
Yeah, so, well, we'll leave that up to the Legion to ask what they need. Right now, it's gonna be 2026. Uh, we're hoping to get things moved eventually to the grant, it's gonna be spring 2026, so. Right, a lot of these things, Kevin, will be coming later, I mean, as we stated earlier, the purpose of this right now is just to change the bylaw so that it can do it.
Yeah, yeah.
And then they'll come up with a plan and then we'll approve all that stuff afterwards as well. Actually, Legion approved it, your worship.
Yeah, correct.
We're out of it, we.
Let's, this is what I was gonna say, this is not actually a town function, beyond tonight of rezoning it, this is actually a Legion thing and I don't want to take away from that. Right, like, we're, we're not doing it, I'd love to take credit for it, but we're actually doing very little effort.
I guess, I guess my point here is, I'm asking these questions for forcing future issues, problems.
And that's, that's the permission development plans are for, right? So, I mean, that, and that is up to Legion to what this.
So, my, my, what I'm basically beating around the bush here is, is the town willing to step in to help?
If somebody were to ask, I'm sure, but nobody, like, that's not the point of what we're doing tonight, tonight we're rezoning. And we've been asked to help as far as rezoning it, so that's what we're doing. Well, that's just, when the time comes, right?
So, it's sort of like you said, the purpose for us, the town, right now is just to change.
Rezoning.
And then all this other stuff, for the Legion, they'll go through the proper way and, and, you know, I can't, I can't speak as to what we will, but it's not our goal. Okay, anything else? Alright, so I'm going to ask for the third and final time, are there any other persons that wish to be heard on this?
Thank you for that.
So, having none, I will close the public hearing, 2025-03. And now, I would think we'll do the, pass the bylaw, I'll ask for a, um, second, a motion for the second reading, Cory?
Yeah, I can move second reading of Bylaw 2025-03 Amendment to Land Use Bylaw.
Thank you, in favor? That is carried, and I'd also need a motion for the third and final reading of Bylaw 2025-03.
I can make a motion for the third and final reading of Bylaw 2503.
Thank you, John, in favor? And that is carried, done. There we go.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And thank you Liz, I don't think we require anything else at this time.
Have a wonderful night, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
You too, Liz.
Alright, look forward to seeing that, that should be interesting. Alright, moving on to the further business, the big one here, 7.1, Spring Budget Adjustments. See if I'll send it.
So, I made some further changes to the budget since the Cowell meeting, um, which I listed in the RFD, um, and then we get to. So, I, yeah, so the final changes were the electronic expenses, sign expenses removed as per discussion at the Cowell, um, the chemical skid removed from the capital budget as per the Cowell. Actual amount for insurance came in, so they were less than budget by 2,800, so I adjusted those. Um, there was a slight increase in police funding of $342, they billed up again. They sent us the original invoice and then we got an amendment, so. Decrease in transportation, so the outdoor repairs and maintenance is the actual quote coming in, so that was for the sinkhole and the paving on 779, 778? 779's the one that's gonna be playing. Um, additional increase to the bulk water station funding due to the final tenders received and analyzed, so that's above the 105 we talked about at the Cowell. Um, and then a slight increase in funding from the rec, funding from Ladue County as I did the whole reconciliation to give to them after the budget passes. So, with these changes, um, and that $70,000 for the bulk water station is coming out of operations.
Yep.
Not, um, not grants, so with those changes, the current tax percentage is proposed at 2.65%, so that's down from the 3.26% that was at Cowell. Um, so, administration recommends the motion of council that the spring budget be approved as presented.
Alright, I mean, discussion, one thing I guess I'd, I'd like, I guess to point out is that the, the funding for the county, that has to do with the library.
No, it's from the rec, that's just the rec funding, yeah, because I have to do a, a schedule for the county once the budget's approved and it has all the things and does the actual calculation, so before I just kinda did a quick help.
So, the budget for the library is in?
Is in there too, yeah.
So, we're, just for the purpose, I don't track you, I see you here, just so you know that it's in there?
Yeah, it is in there, yeah.
We've, we've gone ahead and looked what you guys have asked for in there, discussion. Anybody in the council, any questions, any comments or anything that?
Well, I'd love it to be less, but two, under, under three's a lot better than most places, so I can live with it.
And the total, just so you know, with assessment increase and the budget increase, the total for, um, like, residents?
Yeah, the overall revenue increase.
All over 6%? But.
So, that's assessment base growth?
Yes, the assessment base growth was over three and then, but I think it worked out too, off the top of my head, like $12 a month will be the increase to the average resident.
Right.
That's just the municipal portion, not the school or the, or the Ladue Health and Foundation.
And as we said before, all we were doing there is collecting that money for them.
Yeah, that's not up, so don't be mad at us for that, they can yell at them.
Just wanna make sure everybody knows that.
And Cindy, do you know where the assessments overall, were they up?
Oh, yeah, they were, yeah, presidential were up, commercial were down.
Any further discussions from anybody? Nope. Not, motion then to that spring budget be approved as presented?
I'm gonna motion.
John, in favor? That is carried. Thank you, alright. Mr. Mayor, may I, may I make a comment? Sure. Now that the motion has passed, I want to, I want to thank the finance team for all the hard work that they did working on this budget, the spring budget adjustments. Uh, it's been, it's been a juggle, uh, getting things in a proper order, not in a proper, but continuing in a proper order with all the maintenance we had to look after. The, the big intake pumps for the river are now in and they will be put in this spring and I will say for the record of this recording, that we've been working off one river pump for 10 years. We could have been in serious, dire trouble here, so that disturbs me greatly that there wasn't attention to that detail. Um, and I don't blame anybody for it, it's just, it's been going on a long time. The sewage station, uh, the pumps will be put in this spring as well, as soon as, as soon as we've got all the right bolts in and a new pump for the raw water pond is now, anyone who's ready to go will refurbish the old one. With the intake pumps, um, we have to clean out the big box that the pumps are going into to fix the valve and we're going to look at modifying that valve that's inside the big box, so it comes up in a pump and you can twist it from the top instead of having a diver go in all the time and that's gonna take some time, uh, but we've got that budgeted for and that will happen before the big pumps come in. And we'll wait till it dries up because we've gotta get a crane down there. So, I just wanna say publicly, Cindy, Jessie, Bobby and Cheryl worked extremely hard on this and, uh, my, my input into it was just what, who, why? So, anyways, I just want that on record for the team, thank you.
Thank you, your worship.
No, I agree, thank you for that and, and I guess a couple of highlights, I guess I'd like to point out is, is gonna be the addition of the bulk water station, that's in the budget, so that will be.
And it should be starting soon.
Very soon.
Yeah.
And also the major, major road work on 53rd Avenue for 30 blocks, that's gonna be the, you know, that's something long overdue and those roads over there, like, most of the roads in town, they need, need some work.
And the cost for those, those two blocks is $711,000.
But that's not just putting new asphalt, it's not, it's actually fixing it for once, yeah?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just wanna point out as highlights and, you know, for, yeah, go ahead Cory.
I was just gonna ask Donna a question, can I just, you mentioned the sewage station there. Uh, did we ever look into making sure there's not obstruction in the line or anything? We were before, like, I want to say for the last term, if not, maybe the beginning of this term, but we were talking about, like, some of the specs of what was going on there and it didn't make a whole lot of sense, it seemed like we were getting a lot more, a lot more restriction than just like friction loss and it seemed like there may be a blockage or a valve close or something, do we ever, like, absolutely verify that it's clear?
We had a meeting about that this morning.
Okay.
And the, I called the pump guys, they're pretty amazing, the pump guys figured to check valve problem.
That's, we, yeah, we were assuming there's a valve by the train track there that it could have been and I didn't know if anybody had ever actually physically made sure it was actually open before we burned out new pumps.
There'll be no pumps put in until we figure.
Okay, perfect.
No, we actually had a good talk about that this morning because we.
Yeah, your numbers didn't make sense, everyone kept saying, oh, it's just an old pump, but it, what, older new, it's still, but that didn't make sense.
That's right, no, we're gonna, we think it's a check valve or a gate valve.
Yes, yeah, there's like way too much restriction there.
Hundred percent, um, when we, when we had this, when we fixed the sewage station break at the pipe, all of the act trucks blew it, blew out whatever, uh, we figured there was an obstruction, they blew all that out, there wasn't an obstruction, so now, we've isolated it now to the, the pump guys think it's a, it's a check valve. So, they will check the valve and replace the check valve.
Sounds good, as long as, yeah, like I said, we want to make sure nobody forgot about that.
Oh, no, no, we're not wasting money on renting pumps.
Well, shit, a lot, a lot of extra electricity if nothing else over years.
You got it.
They did say though that the pump, since we sucked out the wet well there, like, with the sewer break, that the pump is looking.
Oh, sure, yeah, sure, that'd be a lot of.
But they're still, yeah, they're still.
Yeah, like I say, everyone just kept blowing it off saying, well, it's just, you know, an old small line, that, I don't think that, yeah, there's gotta be an actual, like, obstruction, not just a small line.
Yeah, we had both, uh, we had both the pump technicians on the line this morning and our guys and we had a really good, robust discussion.
Well, I am glad to hear that.
Yeah, we did.
Perfect.
I was thinking to you the whole time.
Really? Probably for some other reason.
No, it was great. Alright, well, and, yeah, thank Donna for that, thank you very much, so. So, okay.
Great team.
Uh, moving on to the 7.2, the 2024 Audit Financials, we had them presented to us at the Cowell there and I think everybody's had a kind of a chance to look at them, do you wanna speak to them a little bit first, start it off?
Yeah, so, um, we got the results, they were, it was a surplus of 420-something thousand, I don't have them in front of me. But administration would also like to inform council, because we talked about this at the Cowell, that the GST payments have all been received, so there, so it was like 296,000.
Yeah, they finally, they finally answered.
Yeah, we got it, we got, well, we, we still can't get on CRA's website, but they are all in the bank account, so.
Why is that if they wouldn't, if they won't talk to you to actually deal with it?
Well, because I can file, because I have the call, I just can't go on and I can't talk to anybody at Revenue Canada, yeah.
That's insane.
Yeah, and I did contact, just to let you know, I did contact a tax law firm because we got recommended by ours to call them, but they have not returned to my call yet, so after this week, because I have a very busy week and a half up ahead of me, um, then I'm gonna recall them in May and try to, because I just think that's the only way we're gonna get through, because Kelmar still hasn't gotten.
So, it's been like how long since Christine won the lottery? It's been since Christine won the lottery that no one's been able to talk to them?
So, um, the mayor had access.
Did she, okay.
Yeah, but it's probably because Christine gave it to her, um, but, so even Kelmar, because I talked to Heather again and I said, have you guys gotten on and she said no?
This is ridiculous.
Yeah, and she said she's talked to four different people at CRA and nobody knows what a municipality is. Because that is the problem, because CRA thinks everybody's a business that has a business number and that they have owners.
Well, some are sole proprietors.
Right, but they still have an owner, right? So, we don't have an owner and so every four years, our owners change.
We're related enough for profit or something.
Yeah, and I've sent them, ours sent them everybody's information and we tried to get the mayor on and I sent them everything they did, told me to do, I did, and I still can't get access, so.
This is nuts.
Yeah, it is nuts.
And how many years does that cover?
The GST?
Yeah.
Uh, half of '21, '22, '23 and '24.
Okay, yeah.
So, it's 296,000 dollars that we got.
Well, they should like be paying us interest.
They did, there is interest, I still haven't got the, and I don't know if they're gonna mail them or if they're electronic mail, so I can't even see what the notice of assessment.
But typically, they'll only pay you interest if it's like, if you have filed in their late pen, you would be probably able to actually.
If you're late filing too and they, yeah, they'll hold it, yeah. So, there is probably some interest on there, but I know what I filed, so I can figure it out.
Yeah, you know that it's more than what you file.
Um, so, that being said, that audit result that they had under, for GST will be removed, so it also should be noted that this is the town of Thorsby's first clean audit report in at least 14 years. Thank you, Cindy, so, yeah. So, administration recommends through motion of council that the 2024 draft audit financial statements and audit report be approved.
Thank you, anybody have any, other questions or comments, anything else?
No, it's great that you've got traction on the GST because that's very frustrating.
Yeah, well, we got a little bit, we got the money and now we just have to get CRA on the website, like, to be able to access our own.
And things still, regardless, yeah. Half the money's in my half the problem.
Yeah, and they did actually, when I did talk to somebody at CRA that would actually talk to me, not about our account, but would just talk to me, um, she did say get a level three, because then I can appoint people myself, like, if I was to leave, I could appoint the next person.
Yeah, which was essentially what Christine was, but then, you're saying, you've asked Christine, she can't, she can't do that anymore, even though she was.
Yeah, she just, for other reasons, she can't.
Okay, okay, fair enough.
So, um, yeah, it's just, it's super frustrating and I know Calmar's super frustrated because we talk about, how, how are you making out, how are you making out? And nobody's getting anywhere, so, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for that. So then, uh, it's like you get a motion to, uh, that the twenty twenty-four draft audit financial statements and audit report be approved?
I will make that motion.
You all favor? That is carried, good stuff. Fourteen years, eh?
Well, at least fourteen, I only went back fourteen years.
No, technically this one wasn't either, because there is the GST comment still, just for the record.
No, it's off.
It is not because it is still in there, because it is as of the calendar, as of December thirty-first.
No, then he said it would be removed, I have his email.
In the draft that I have in front of me.
Yeah, because he just hasn't issued, he said he will remove it.
And if you just cut the money now, though, it still not was erected on December thirty-first.
It's not gonna be on the audit report. And they can, with assurance now, say that the GST was correct.
Okay. Okay, uh, moving on to new business, uh, eight point one, Luke County Recreation Cost Share Agreement. And, uh, we've got a new agreement there, see, uh, Don, you wanna go through that with us?
Thank you, Your Worship. So, um, the county, uh, the CAO of Calmar, CAO of Thorsby, CAO of, uh, Warburg all got together at a meeting in Calmar to, to go through this agreement and, uh, to make any suggestions. And, uh, basically, we're following the twenty-eight, two zero three eight cost share agreement and the new agreement will bring us in line with the other two municipalities in, in the Duke, so we're all pretty close to what we're doing, uh, and what we're getting. And you can see on page seventy-six and ninety-seven, there's some, there's a blue, uh, notice in there under M and we just needed that definition, the town's, uh, population. In Warburg, there'll be the villages, in, in Calmar will be the town, so just had to make that clear in each of the agreements. Um, uh, the Schedule A, we have Thorsby Recreation District, and then Schedule B is the cost shared facilities, programs, and services, and the annual schedule agreement deliverable. Kelly would have been here tonight, but she had the Go Girl, uh, event today and, and holy moly, she's, uh, she's kind of done. So, basically, we followed this fairly closely, uh, we, we had good discussion, good robust discussion on some of them, uh, some of the articles, just for clarification and cleaning up, not for any kind of, uh, disagreement, uh, discussion. Um, and, uh, basically, it's about the payment, about how we report, that hasn't changed much. So, um, the term, yeah, is, uh, commenced in January, and twenty twenty-five is the effective date. And then the termination clause, of course, is standard, what we knew every four years. And of course, Dean keeps a pretty tight, um, uh, watch on us and we on the county, so that we're always communicating and talking, where are we at, what's going on, what's happening. They have very good, very good relationships with recreation, with the county. And, uh, so, um, uh, council's had a chance to see this before, but this is just the final, the final draft.
Is it same here, what's the percentage of, or is it? Or is it? I just wanna make sure.
It'll be the same as last year.
Changes based on population, I guess that's my only comment there is, we've had issues before with the, the percentage just kind of arbitrarily decreasing because of the county's feeling that more people live in the Warburg area versus our area or, you know, Calmar or whatever.
Yeah.
So I get there's a line on a map, but it's not very, not as definitive of a population as ours would be, for example, with the, the census being the basis. There's the, well, how many people live in between these two arbitrary lines from Pigeon Lake to the river? But they're the only ones who can come up with that number, so it's kind of.
Although it says the census, twenty twenty-one census.
The census doesn't break theirs down into their recreation districts. It says their county's population.
Oh, that's a major, yeah.
So that's the problem, where they've, in the past, just arbitrarily decided that they have less people in our recreation district than previous and we have no recourse but to say, I guess, fine, because, what else do you do?
I just don't think it says in here what the percentage would be for twenty twenty-five.
It doesn't say the percentage because it's a variable percentage and like I say, it's radically dropped years past because of feelings, instead of actual numbers. So I don't know how to correct that.
We have a good relationship, right?
That's wonderful, but what happens when we don't?
Yeah, with population.
I have a proposal, um, Your Worship, through Council Gilbert. I think what we can do is phone, uh, Dean tomorrow and we can email out to all of you the, the percentage, once, once we get it, or Cindy.
No, I'm not worried with the percentage today, I'm worried about the six years from now when suddenly they say there's only eighteen hundred people living in the Thorsby Recreation District of, of the Duke County and we say, no, that's not true, there's more than that, and they say, tough, there's not. Right, how, ours is based off of a third-party census, their, their population count is based off of whatever they say it is.
Gotcha.
So really, they're just.
Has been historically an issue before.
Okay. Yeah, and, and I know for the last three years anyways, it's been sixty-two point, yeah, something.
Yes.
And it hasn't changed.
They have the formula there, sixty-two, and that's what they're going by, right?
Yeah, but we, like Corey's saying, that they don't, we don't know the county population within the Thorsby Recreation.
Yeah, the census covers what's the population of the Duke County.
Yeah.
But then they've sub-broken into recreation districts. So between those two arbitrary lines, what is the population? And it's up to them to tell us what it is and there's not really any verification or no way of knowing that that's right or not, which when things are going good, that's fine, when things aren't, is the problem.
So we need a verification.
We need a, if we're saying, this is the formula, what is that actual population? And it can't be because Dean said so.
So you want us to put that in the motion, Donald, that you'll talk to them, no?
Well.
You, you can direct us to, to clarify that for you, get back to you, uh, if, if you're in agreement. Uh, we can, uh, we can, uh, sign it or we can bring it back to Cal.
Well, I, I'd like to move, by direction of administration, to, uh, consult with other parties to determine, uh, a, a consistent basis for how the, uh, Thorsby Recreation District population is to be determined in calculating the, uh, proportionate population.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I support Corey on that idea.
Okay, all in favor?
Yeah, I was trying to be arbitrary, it actually has been an issue before, it's like, yeah, I don't want to wait till it is an issue again and then say, why didn't we?
Yeah, we'll look after it.
I think it's fair to determine how they come up with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least if it's in, set in stone of this is how it will be determined, it's not, not up for debate later.
And, uh, Counsel Gilbert, if I may point out, Your Worship, is, would you like to, uh, make a friendly amendment to your most, give us a timeframe, Cal or next, uh?
Oh, whatever's good for you, Cal, or, or fine, if that's, if that's enough time for you, it's not, uh.
I mean, they have, in Schedule Three, they have their, their timeline, right, of their deliveries and they, uh, they want us, uh, uh, confirm it, it says March first, so they're a little behind on that, right?
Oh, they've already, no, they've already, can, coming to confirm current year cost shareable capital projects. I think Kelly's already talked to them about that.
Okay.
And then I just have to, as soon as, because you approved the budget, so, like.
Yeah, but we can do that either way, whether this is.
Yeah, I can submit all that stuff to them tomorrow.
Yes.
Because it's already been approved, so it'll go off to him tomorrow with the financials, because those are.
Yeah, I'm assuming we can operate as though we're going to iron out this detail.
Yeah, it's just, I think it's just clarification, so I don't think it's gonna affect our funding this year.
Yep. Yeah, I'm not saying to change the, uh, the, you know, proportions, I'm just saying, how do we determine their populations? That's not an issue later, so.
Well, according to the schedule, they're supposed to pay us something from July the fifteenth.
Yeah, but maybe we get everything.
That never happens.
Which we love.
Yeah.
All right, so, uh, do you want, I guess we don't need the amendment then, Donald, or?
Um.
Guess no. Like, if you'd like one, we can certainly do.
I, I would prefer one, that way it's registered as, uh, as, um, as an amendment and, and, uh, Counsel Gilbert, uh, Your Worship, the Counsel Gilbert, if you're, if you're amenable to Cal in, uh, May, uh, we, we'd add that as an amendment to your original motion.
I don't, sorry, I'm confused.
Sorry.
Like, I, I don't, I don't wanna agree to this memorandum until that has been addressed in some way.
That's right.
Yeah, so like, my, my motion is just to give you guys direction to figure out what the, the solution is there for coming up with the, the, the numbers for the preparation.
And then we just want to.
And then we can pass it then, yeah.
Okay, if you're okay, we'll, we'll bring it back since June at Cal.
Sure.
May, come on, May.
Oh, yeah, May, sorry.
When it comes back, it's, I mean, whatever, whatever's convenient, that's fine, if that's a good date for today.
So we'll bring it back, for sure. Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, done. Uh, eight point two, Thorsby, Amy.
Oh, well, we should probably, we should probably have voted on that.
That would be a good idea, thank you.
Oh, oh, okay. Motion, all in favor? Sally, you think good? Okay. Got it.
Thank you, Council, Your Worship.
Yeah. I thought we were just gonna bring it back. Yeah, well, I used to have.
Yeah.
Thank you, Director.
Accordingly, yeah.
You gotta tell me what to do and then you gotta make me do it.
Yeah.
Okay, eight point two, Thorsby, Amy, Rodeo Community Grant Request, and, uh, I see they, uh, they've filled out the community grant application, so, uh, it looks pretty straightforward, unless you wanna make any comments on it, Donald?
No, it's, it's very straightforward, Your Worship and Council, um, they, uh, they'll use it for the rodeo. Last year, they certainly gave the town a lot of gratefulness to me.
Yeah.
With the rodeo, I was there twice and, and it was, they were very, very, uh, uh, excited to, to call, call us a sponsor, actually. So, uh, I talked to the president last year, I said, well, we've given you a grant, we can be a sponsor of something, but you could say we're a grant sponsor if you want. She goes, no, I'm happy with saying you sponsoring, so that's, that's up to them, how they wanna promote it, so, which is really lovely. So, uh, just about every, uh, pretty much at every event, we were sponsored, so that's pretty cool.
Okay, anybody have any comments?
Nope, it's the interesting, I'm glad they figured out that the grant was available to them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, uh, motion to, uh, exact their request.
I can be going to approve their request.
Thank you, John, all in favor? And that is carried. And moving on to, uh, nine point one, the Bylaw and Policy, Tax Rate Bylaw, twenty twenty-five oh four. Um, first, second, and third reading, and I guess we're gonna do a little stream today.
Yeah, Corey won't be happy about it.
That's too well, it's, we've already done the, uh, budget part, so this is probably already part of it.
Yeah, so this is just, uh, twenty twenty-five tax bylaw based on the budget approval of two point six.
Okay. So, um, all right, and a motion for the, uh, first reading of Bylaw twenty twenty-five oh four.
All right. Yeah, I can do first reading of Bylaw twenty twenty-five oh four, tax rate.
Thank you, all in favor? That is carried, uh, motion for the second reading of Bylaw twenty twenty-five oh four, John?
Second motion.
All in favor? Carry, and I guess we need a motion to.
Because we've talked about this discussion for six months now and because it was discussed at the COW, I'm going to grudgingly move to approve the reading of, uh, Bylaw twenty twenty-five oh four, tax rate.
All right, yeah, all in favor? That is carried.
Well, then, so, yeah, it was actual third reading.
That's third reading.
That's a motion to allow third reading and then let's actually do third reading.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so now, uh, motion for the third and final reading, please.
I can make that motion.
All in favor? Carry. Cool. Okay. We are moving on to. Uh, it would be eleven point one, the variance board for March twenty twenty-five. And it's very popular, it's indeed, well.
I know, it's like been the Cindy Show all month.
Yeah.
Um, so for the month of, or whenever this is March, um, where our revenue is at nine point five four percent, or three hundred and eighty-one thousand, um, compared to nine point nine percent last year, so it's a little bit lower. Um, and our expenses, I believe, were, it just said about twenty-five percent, twenty-four point four eight compared to sixteen point eight three, but we had that big, um, sewer break that cost us a lot of money in the first quarter, so, um, that's probably the main reason why it's up more than last year. And I think insurance is in here too, but it wasn't in there last year at this time, so.
Why would that be different?
Because we just didn't get the bill last year till later, because we were, um, trying to figure out the.
Oh, that's right, yes, okay, good, yeah, yeah, it's not, yeah, that we were kinda still screwing with it.
Yeah, yeah, so we got it now and it, I mean, that's for, terms for the year for the town is a hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, I was thinking, should we like suddenly switch providers that, you know, or twenty years.
No, it was just last year, there were, we were, there was stuff on there that shouldn't have been on there and the stuff that wasn't on there.
Yeah, now that you say that, I totally remember that, yes, we were still tinkering, but yeah, that was on us and not them and, yeah, yeah, I totally forgot about that.
Correct.
Okay, anybody have any questions on the various boards, anything? Any else you want to talk about? No? All right, motion to accept the March twenty-five variance board for information? All in favor? And that is carried. All right, the highlight of the evening, eleven point two, Bill fifty update.
It's my turn. I won't, I won't take long, Your Worship, uh, last Thursday at, uh, Thursday evening, I sat in a webinar with Minister McHyver and all the CAOs of the municipalities, the summer villages, uh, while he discussed some of the changes with Bill fifty. Bill fifty talks about changes to the Municipal Government Act, changes to the Local Authorities Election Act, changes to the New Home Fire Protection Act, and changes to the Safety Code Act. I'm not gonna go through all the changes, uh, that he's proposing, but AUMA presented, uh, an analysis paper, uh, for the CAOs and I'm gonna go through a few just to update you on just a few. So under the intermunicipal collaboration framework, uh, which is a document that facilitates cooperation and cost sharing between the neighboring munis, um, and, uh, and to deliver more efficient services, they, uh, there's a concern about the definition of third-party services, meaning a service provided by a corporation independent from the municipality, to whom services are provided, and the only services provider authorized under an enactment to provide the services. So, uh, this question was answered in court, believe it or not, under, uh, King's Bench versus, or Woodlands County versus White Court. Uh, the, or the King's Bench order ruled that operational library costs, I thought this might be interesting, the library, operational library costs should not be included in the intermunicipal collaboration framework, but found that capital and maintenance costs of the building that is born by the municipality should be considered as part of the ICA process. The court made a similar ruling that operational costs under a municipal police service agreement or provincial police service agreement should not be included in the intermunicipal collaboration framework, but that capital costs borne by municipalities related to building detachments should be included. It's unclear how such costs will be treated under the proposed definition. So just, uh, I'm just, uh, uh, informing you, uh, the King's Bench has made a determination, but Alberta government hasn't fought, factored that into Bill fifty yet, so that's just, I, I've been watching the, uh, Woodlands County and White Court for this specific thing because of, because of the issues with the library, so, none to be concerned about just yet, but it's, it's there and it's been, uh, put in the courts. As you can see, there's lots of pages here, I've, uh, uh, talked about, um, uh, the new, uh, the Code of Conduct Bylaw. It's still the same, as they wanna create an ombudsman, they wanna create if, go ahead and.
Well, yes and no, that's sort of true.
Yeah.
That's, as far as Bill fifty's concerned, they're just removing it and disallowing anything that resembles it.
Yeah.
We cannot have any bylaw policy motion that refers to conduct or lack thereof by any member of council, it's entirely just not anyone else's business, with the public insinuation that somewhere down the road, they may look at an ombudsman, that they're removing all of the Code of Conduct stuff first. Eventually, they may replace it down the road with an ombudsman.
Yeah, they're, they're looking at it. And one of the things, Counsel Corey too, that Minister McHyver said is, they have no current pending court cases right now, so they wanna move ahead with their version of a Code of Conduct Bylaw.
Well, but like you say, they, they're saying they're going to do that, but Bill fifty is just removing it and there's nothing to replace it that anybody has been able to tangibly point to besides, you know, hopes and wishes.
That's exactly right, and one of the things we brought up, talked about the protection of the well-being of CAOs and municipal staff. It has a duty under occupational health and safety legislation to protect the physical and mental well-being of all employees, including the CAO. But Counsel harasses an employee, the munis is concerned that the municipality will not have any tools. Well, exactly, they won't, um, in, in, in what they're doing here, so, uh, it's up to the, there's no question, Counsel Corey. It's, uh, it's all just, think about it.
Yeah, they're staying down the road, it's not the same as being included in the bill.
That is correct. Now, here's an interesting one, uh, we talked about this at great length, that, um, when the, the, the sharing information with all of council, when the CAO or designees, uh, provides information about the operation or administration of the municipality to one counselor, the information must be shared with all other councils within seventy-two hours. Okay, so, that's fine. Okay, so that's fine, but here comes the problem, and this is what the AUMAs' concerns are, is typically the CAO has more regular contact with, you know, council or the mayor of Reeve and over Reeve. Maybe challenging for the CAO to communicate every detail that's shared with one counselor with all within 72 hours, because if we talk about something on a Friday, we got 72 hours to let you all know. If that issue is of high importance, if it is confidential, if it is legal, we can't meet that deadline. And we said to the minister, are you, are you discussing the amount of CAOs that don't tell their councils anything? We have to point blank that. Okay, I do. And he said, well, are you communicating regularly with your council? I said, you can't be a CAO and not, you have, you have to talk about things. So I said, I asked the Belgian Smith, where'd you come up with 72 hours? Because it's very arbitrary, why did you come up with that figure? He said, well, we're just toying with that. Okay. So AB munis is concerned, and we are too, that 72 hours won't be an adequate period of time to share information with all of council after it's been provided to one counselor. It's particularly relevant in small municipalities where the CAO works part-time, and is only in the office two or three days a week, or there are municipalities where the CAO works full-time, but there's no other staff. So this one's up in the air, too, we're indicating through munis, the timeline of 72 hours is very problematic, and we're not in favor of it. Cory, did you?
There is, though, in, in Bill 50, and there's many things about it, I don't, I don't even, I'm not supporting the way it's written at all, but they, there actually is provision within Bill 50 to not adhere to the 72 hours with reason. So as long as there's a reasonable justification why it is not disclosed, like, if you were to say, well, you had a meeting with Daryl, and it wasn't anything overly relevant, and it was a long weekend, and you'll talk to us the next Tuesday, and it's been more than 72 hours, and on Tuesday, say, yeah, so I talked to Daryl about that on Friday or Thursday, and it wasn't really pressing, it wasn't urgent, so I just waited till tonight to tell you, well, then, perfect, it's covered. You just have to have a reason, you can't just arbitrarily withhold information.
That's right, and the thing.
So the 72 hours, only if it was something actually relevant and pressing and germane, I say, why didn't you tell me? You have to have a reason why you didn't tell me.
Yes, that's what I felt like, and then part of, part of what this, to support what you're just saying, is each council, this is from the minister, each council will have a different expectation for when and how information should be shared by their CAO, depending on their local environment, and of course, AB munis recommends the proposed addition of section 208.13, is amended to change the timeline from within 72 hours to require that municipalities pass a bylaw that prescribes the timeline in which their CEO or designate must share information with council after the information has been provided. Then we took, then he talks about the realities regards to the timelines that are set, the review of this section highlights the overall challenges of expecting CAOs to provide information to the rest of council based on one counselor's request for information. The provision impedes on the CAO's expertise and judgment to determine when information provided to one counselor must be shared with the remaining. And most of the CAOs in the chat, like, we could, you know, we're all shut off from talking, but we could certainly chat, and we said, most of us are talking to our council all the time, you have to, it's just natural to do that, and to have a bylaw passed that I got to do this or that, because the minister was pretty adamant about the bylaw that night, too, so in keeping with what you're saying, Counselor Cory, there's certain things that we, we don't have to adhere to if, if we can't, let's say.
If we have an alternate or, like, justification or, like, if, yeah, we have a policy or a procedure, or just a good excuse, essentially, is the way it's written.
Basically, that's what it is, what's your excuse? I don't know, I have pneumonia. So, anyway, they're still, they're still fighting with this one because they're worried about, most of the CAOs are worried about it creates an environment that disrupts council into the weeds of focusing on administration rather than on council's role in government. Well, the, not, yeah, go ahead.
Well, see, realistically, in that case, though, I mean, we have in this municipality had circumstances where certain members of council were more or less camped out here, you know, 24 hours a day, and inserted themselves in everything, and that's why this sort of thing is, is an issue, because when one person is pretending like they're this co-CEO, CAO, and the rest of council has no idea what's even going on, and somebody's acting like they're in a fight, then it becomes a problem.
Exactly.
But realistically, that is on its own kind of a good justification why, like, somebody made a request.
Yep.
They wanted information, but frankly, it's an operational thing, it has nothing to do with governance, it's operational, so I didn't share it because it's an operational detail that was not germane.
Exactly.
So, I mean, that's really all you need to say under those sorts of circumstances.
Well, it's not only that, but they're also, you know, they're not blaming, I'm not saying they have to blame the mayor, but say, you tell me, and I don't tell anybody.
Yeah.
Yet, you know, this is on you, that you should.
It's on me.
So, it's not right, it's not.
Oh, that's actually a good point, that's a very valid point.
Yeah, it's on the CAOs, that's where it kind of goes.
Yeah, technically, as a chief elected officer, technically, the honor should be on you in that circumstance, if you were told.
Correct.
Should be your discretion when to tell everyone, and you should be doing it sooner than later.
So, you know, that is.
So as soon as what she told you, technically, it should be considered that she told all of council. She tells Tracy, it's a little different story.
That's right.
But with the mayor, it's different, I feel like.
So it's not, it's not really, it's not very good.
No.
No, and what we recommend.
I totally missed that, we, like, we talked about this at the, at the governance thing.
A hundred percent.
And I totally, I don't think that, I missed that, off that mayor/CAO distinction passes the buck.
Yeah, because you're right, you end up getting elected members of council be thinking they're the CAO, and that's happening a lot right now, and it's, it's, it's not in keeping with the MGA and council's role. Now, what some of the CAOs recommended was, don't put all this fancy language, and just put, if it's an emergency, tell it right away, if it can be, wait till the next council, tell it right away, or let the mayor decide, or the Reeve, when this information is to be disseminated to the council, that's what we kind of suggested. At least you've got three, three viable opportunities, viable, not bylaw, three viable opportunities that make sense, and that are, they are not stepping on the natural person powers the municipality have. So, that's where that one, and there's more to come on that one, I'm sure, just double checking, there's a whole lot more here, I am not going to go into it, because a lot of it is further review required, like, the new home warranty act, further stuff required. Local Authority's election act is pretty, pretty standard, they got a few things, but nothing serious, changes to the Safety Code Act, nothing, nothing to really tell you about. So basically, it's the MGA again, and trying folks in and out, basically.
Well, there's a lot of, like, the public interest issue stuff, it's, it's a lot of kind of them regurgitating the 20 stuff that was problematic, where, like, for example, the cabinet can just order the CAO to conduct a vote of elect or to remove a counselor without requirement of any, you know, like, you, they, again, it's a very heavy-handed, if you are running for council and you are elected, you are not a public servant, you are an employee of cabinet, essentially, this is problematic, it's very heavy-handed if they wish it to be.
Yeah, no, I could agree that a lot of CAOs would probably like to fire certain counselors.
Well, but that's not, that's not.
But that's not our job.
It defeats the purpose of running for election, saying I'm representing the residents if I have to answer to cabinet, or, like, if suddenly, just because, you know, Minister McHyver doesn't like that I said something, suddenly, I'm now going to just get removed from council, and we're going to have a by-election? A, a waste of money, B, I'm not very independent at that point, am I?
No, you're not, and, and it also, it erodes the natural person powers, and I think that's a work fight in the most stuff, because if I'm not mistaken, in fact, I'm pretty sure, Ontario doesn't have natural person power as a province, right? It's interesting, I was reading a bulletin the other day from the government, and we do, and a lot of other municipalities do, and we have the right, you, as elected officials, along with administrative partners, have the right to run your municipality through budget, through bylaws, through a few other things, like, we do with planning development, all that, right, which is natural.
Yeah, there's, there's some limitations from full natural person powers, like, like a corporation or an actual person.
That's right.
Has more autonomy than, like, we have some stripped-out abilities, but.
That's right, but at least we have some autonomy.
Close, too, yeah.
We're close. So anyways, this will carry on, I'll keep you as updated as I can, and.
Did everybody get a copy of that?
Okay.
Yeah, I can pin it on, I don't.
I don't know, I know that the board was supposed to talk about it on Thursday, I don't know if it ever actually went out or not on Friday.
I'll forward, I got a copy, I'll forward on it. You can have another look at it.
It's like, oh, there's, yeah, there's a bunch in there that's just kind of a waste of paper, and a lot in there that's very concerning.
And of course, the new home warranties are really budgetable, like, everything's under review, like, nobody's happy with that at all.
Wow, that would, that never worked from the get-go.
No.
Just added a lot of cost.
It did, a hundred percent, you can opt out, but if you, if you, you can have a new home warranty in your house, but if you opt out, then it can come off your house, but it, if your house is sold before ten years. Oh, my gosh, it just, it's, anyways, that's the latest update.
All right, well, thank you for that. Anybody have any questions? No? Okay, motion to accept the Bill 50 update for information.
I said nothing about it, I don't like it at all.
I don't either.
Okay, how do you look at it?
Take it as information.
All in favor? Okay, done. Okay, actually, that's, that's the agenda right there, so we'll, we'll go into camera, public comments. Anybody in the gallery has anything to say back there?
No.
No?
What was the big announcement that was being made?
Did you not see it?
No.
Our website, it's regarding the water, and our.
Do you have a copy of it?
It's also the connection.
We, we have entered, we're in negotiations with the county of Wacasw, the bylaw, throughout the region, those who provide the water, we're growing partnerships, if you go to the website, Thorsby website, you'll see the whole bulletin in there, and then we'll be giving, we will have a county meeting here called at the end of June, and explain it further, and also we'll have updates through the, to the course, when we get them, we'll post them on the website, you can get them through there, so. We need a coffee, if you want a coffee, we've got a coffee.
Yeah, I don't know how to get on that.
That's what I'm thinking about, getting a cup, like, a pretty hard coffee.
That's what it looks like right there.
I just zoomed in so that maybe.
So you're going to partner with?
County of Wacasw.
We're, yeah, we're working with them, and there's a public consultation.
We're going to stay providing for customers?
So they're going to, the corridor possibly is going to look like towards Mulvers, Mammy, or along the eight, the star.
If I could, it is still, the details are still being sorted out, there'll be a public consultation with an information available later on, I think in June, still.
That's correct.
So as these details are worked out, they will be available, but we can't put the horse before the cart and start telling you all the details just yet.
Very true.